Good evening, everyone. Again, thank you for your patience. I would like to call this regular meeting of Erie County Council to order on this Tuesday evening, December 14th, 2021, at 7:10 PM. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Aye, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, our optional prayer is going to be led by Vice Chairwoman and Finance Chairwoman Kim Clear. Ms. Clear?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Shauerman, for appointing me to give this tonight. This is my last scheduled council meeting, so I'm able to do this. Thank you so much. When I was coming up with tonight's thoughts and reflections, I was thinking about the calling that all of us have up here and that what we've done over the last few years, and that's the role of service. And the role of service is the highest calling. So I actually have two quotes I'd like to read. I think there's no, sorry, I think there's no higher calling in terms of a career than public service, which is a chance to make a difference in people's lives and improve the world. And I know that that is why each and every member of council is here, and I am honored to have served with you. And I thank you so much. Finally, Fred Rogers. At the center of the universe is a loving heart that continues to beat and that wants the best for every person. Anything we can do to help foster the intellect and spirit and emotional growth of our fellow human beings, that is our job. Those of us who have this particular vision must continue against all odds. Life is for service. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote of council this evening?
Mrs. Clear?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Here.
Mr. Schank?
Here.
Chairman Anderson?
The next portion of our meeting is a hearing of the public. If you called in and were able to get your name on the agenda, you will receive five minutes. If you would like to speak but were not able to get in in time to have your name on the agenda, you will receive three minutes. We will certainly make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak that wishes to be heard. First on our agenda tonight is Sheila Woager. Sheila, please come forward and if you could give us your full name and municipality, and I'll begin your time then.
Good evening. I'm Sheila Ellen Woager, and I reside here in the area, here in the city of Erie. Do you want my address?
No, that's okay.
Okay. I'd like to first give honor to God tonight for allowing me to be here today. I do have a question before I start. Is the solicitor, Thomas Tellerico, the same Tellerico that was the solicitor in 2007? Is this the same Tellerico? Because what I had to say tonight is different. When I saw that he is being retained as solicitor, I'd like to object to his being retained, if I can do that as a citizen. And the reason being is because in 2007, when I ran for public office, magistrate district judge against Paul Urbaniat, I was served with a copy of the election code. I was employed in the office of voter registration and was informed that I could not work in the office because I was a candidate for public service. And I was served that paper by Mr. Doug Smith, and it was given to him by Attorney Tellerico. At the time that I was served with this information, Attorney Tellerico knew or should have known that Paul Urbaniat was in violation of a Pennsylvania court of conduct, namely nepotism. And how I came about that information, when I was, I'm a little nervous tonight because this is not really what I had planned to speak on. But when I was in the certification process in Harrisburg, an attorney from the Department of Justice made this comment to the entire class, and I quote, "We know that there is wrongdoing going on in Erie, Pennsylvania, but if you don't do anything about it, neither can we." I'm like, oh, so I'm the only one from Erie? So when I get back, I did my research. I had just graduated from Gannon with a bachelor's degree in legal studies. I ran that same year for the office of district judge. I did pass the certification exam, more special allowances for me, praise God. And so when I filed a complaint against Paul Urbaniat accusing him, not accusing him, but according to law, he was in violation because his wife was working in his office. But when they did their investigation, they found no wrongdoing. I said, well, of course not, because the law only applies in Pennsylvania, from my experience, is if you're black. I've been here 25 years. I'm from Muskogee, Oklahoma originally, and so I call Erie really a modern-day plantation because the allowances that are given to some is not given to all. After I graduated from Gannon, I'd applied for a job in the Human Relations Commission's office, was interviewed by my former, one of my former supervisors, well, my supervisor's supervisor, which was Doug Smith. And I want to thank Mary Rennie, Councilman Mary Rennie, for giving me my first full-time job after being here two years. I was meeting my senior, the late my senior, Vincent Enright. I had just converted to Catholicism. I had missed going to confession. You all know the routine. And my senior Enright came to my mind, and so I called him. He agreed, he was meeting the then Human Relations Commission's officer here in the personnel department. So I didn't have an assignment at the time. I was subbing at Erie School District. And so I came to the courthouse early, and so while I was sitting there waiting to meet with him, I saw that there were job announcements posted. So I said, to waste time, I'll just fill out these applications. One was for library assistant, one was for library clerk. So I went in to meet with my senior Enright. He encouraged me to go back to school. So within the week, I got a call from Mary Rennie offering me a job. And to make a long story short, she was my entrance into county government. And I want to thank you again for that opportunity. But back to Mr. Smith, and I did ask him permission to call him by his first name because I was taught etiquette in school and something that is lacking here in the state of Pennsylvania. But at any rate, he interviewed me and told me what I had been hearing from everybody up until I met Mary Rennie, you don't have the experience. I'm like, what? And given from what I was told by Doug Smith, when he came to county government, he didn't have experience either. And I was hoping that Mr. Leon would be here tonight because the board secretary at the time was paid a $5,000 bonus to train Mr. Smith.
Ma'am.
I'm just speaking truth to power.
Thank you. Your time has expired this evening.
Five minutes has expired?
Five and a half minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll be back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is Ms. Freda Tepper. Ms. Tepper was not able to attend this evening. She is in quarantine. She did send to council members copies of her comments, which are going to be placed into the county council minutes. And we certainly wish her the best, and we know that we will see her here at council again soon and assure her that her comments will be placed in them. Those are the only two members of the public who had five minutes to speak. Are there any other members of the public that wish to be heard? Please come forward. You will receive three minutes. Just give us your full name and your municipality, and I'll begin your time then.
Hello, my name is Lydia Smith, and I'm a homeless person. And I'm just kind of wondering that there's a lot of homeless, there's more on the street that's into the homeless shelter. And I've been homeless since June. There is, really has been no help we call. We don't have any openings. So I have been in parking ramps, sleeping on the street. I've been trying, you know, but I have a question. I mean, is there any way they have money for like rental assistance for like the homeless to try to get us off the street, you know? And I mean, something because you guys can't be hanging out here. Where do we do? Where do we go? I have been, you know, talking to Andre. He actually is the one that, you know, what make your voice to be heard? I mean, because, I'm tired.
Does that conclude your comments? If it does, I would, I would like to.
Yes.
We normally don't comment to people, but I would like to make a comment to you.
Okay.
We do have the home team is available for shelter, and you can get vouchers to stay in hotel.
Stay in.
Have you been in contact with the home team?
Yes, a couple of us, and they somehow denied it. I've been following up with Andre, and it's just, it's just, it's just bad right now. So there is a lot of us that's out in the street then into the homeless shelter, and that's why my question was, would there be any, you know, lady who's helping me with, you know? So that's what my question was to, I mean, because we're, you know, we have to be out at 6:00 AM, and we're gone all day. So I, I mean, it's like Jesus.
Erie County Care Management at 16th and Sasse Press. They handle Erie County's emergency rental money.
They told me I didn't qualify for rapid rehousing, and also I've been trying to get other homeless people, but they're afraid.
Okay. And have you been to the Day Reporting Center, which is close by the Erie County Care Management?
No.
In the same facility?
I don't know where it's at.
You know where the Erie County Care Management offices are?
Yes.
Okay, so just a little further south, right along that same side of the building. It's called the Erie County Day Reporting Center. Now, that is, there are people who are there that know where the services are for Erie County that could help steer you in the right place. So that could be one potential source. I will tell you that this council passed in the ARPA funding $2 million for homelessness.
Yes.
So we're hoping to get that money on the street.
Yes.
And we are actually passing an ordinance tonight through the mental health and intellectual disabilities department for $8 million of housing assistance. So those are some potential options. We certainly want to, don't want to see you be on the street. Nobody should have to be on the street. And, you know, anything that we can do to help, we certainly want to try and help.
Thank you.
And we know that Councilman Horton is on top of those things and can be a great resource.
Yeah, he told me, you know, I can talk all day long, but it has to take you people to come in and make your voice be heard. I can talk, but, you know, it's you people.
Councilman Horton, please.
Yes, Mr. Lydia.
Yes.
Before you leave, I'd like to give you my personal number.
Yes, please. I could bawl my eyes out right now because I just.
You know, if anybody up here knows, I know. And so you won't get an answer up here or a solution tonight, but I can assure you and I promise you, I'll take you by your hand. I'll take you to those places.
Thank you.
If you're eligible, you're eligible. If you're not, you're not. But we will get through this together. I've been through the parking ramps. It breaks my heart when I see. I've been homeless before. So my colleagues know it's something that's very, very dear to me. We have a lot of money coming to this community, and the two things I've said over and over continuously is that we haven't done anything for the homeless and we haven't done anything for the youth. And I won't stop saying it. I won't stop advocating for it. But I'm gonna help you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna help that community.
Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Councilman Horton, perhaps we can also help them with the Sisters of St. Joseph's, the Benedictine Sisters as well. And Vice Chairwoman Clear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted, very quickly, I wanted to commend you on your bravery for coming forward tonight. Thank you. Thank you for bearing your soul to us. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Was there anything else you would like to say? Thank you, Councilman Horton. Are there any other members of the public that wish to be heard? Please step forward. Again, if you give us your full name and your municipality, and I will begin your three minutes then.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deontay Cooley. I live in the city of Erie. The reason why I'm here tonight, I'm not sure if it is a county council issue or a city council issue, but as I'm noticing in the news in the newspaper, there are a lot of different grants and different fundings and different things for different populations within the city. And what my issue, or I guess my concern is, is like, as far as the representation of, I mean, well, I guess I'd say appropriation of funds for the representation of people who look like me. And when I say people who look like me, I don't necessarily mean just black people, but I mean like people in the younger generation. I'm 35 years old, you know what I mean? But there are a lot of people who lack the education to be able to obtain the information to use these funds, but there are people who actually need these funds from small business startups to just different community services or even, I've been in contact with people who are interested in starting community centers to help individuals who they identify as problematic or problems within their own community that we aren't addressing as a whole. And I just, I guess I would like to see more information be put out there for people of my age, because people who need that help, who have the, I mean, who lack the intelligence and who are ignorant, for lack of better words, to the information that is available. I'm a very resourceful person, so I do a lot of research. I do a lot of, you know, online research. I've accomplished things in my life, so I am able to do certain things, and I know that the information is there, and I know that the funds are available for certain individuals, but people don't believe, people don't understand, people aren't educated. And like, I try to get people to come to this meeting with me. I'm the only person that's willing to come, but I'm willing to stand up to say like, we need help as far as the struggles within our community and outside of homelessness, outside of, you know, people who need help rental assistance. We as adults need education. I understand that the community college is coming, but I don't necessarily mean like for trades and things of that nature. But people need to learn more about government, more about allotted funds that can be available to help people, not just to have money, but to change their lives as far as, like, I help people. I teach stocks. I teach people about crypto. I teach people about credit repair, just financial literacy and things of that nature. And I'm only one person, and there are other people who I would love to connect with, to have these conversations, and to be able to establish myself, to offer different services. But I'm just not sure how I will go about, or people who think like me and look like me, will go about being able to access those funds. I've been to community centers to ask for help. I've sat in many of these meetings. I've sat on many of city council meetings. I've seen grants, you know, be distributed to different places and different organizations. And I think that we are not targeting the ignorant community who actually have the skills to be successful but do not have the education or the information to take themselves to the next level. So I'm not sure if it's just a question or if I'm just here to be heard, but I feel like we need to do more for people who lack the knowledge but have the skills to be able to help them take themselves to the next level and be successful and use some of this government funding that's coming out here to be able to try a different approach outside of just the news or outside of just newspaper advertisements, but for actual advocacy, for people to come into these communities and let people know and understand that this information is here, it is possible for you to be educated, and we have appointed people who are willing to assist you with taking your business to the next level or taking your education to the next level or even, like I said, teaching some of those skills and things that they don't teach us in school like taxes, credit, stocks. Life insurance is a big thing in my community right now. People think it's a joke to get life insurance, but then everybody's dying. So again, I don't know if this is something that I'll have to come and talk on a county council meeting level or a city council meeting level, but I plan on like doing this, moving forward. Like, I mean, I've sat in a couple of meetings and I didn't have enough courage to stand up and speak, but I think at this point forward, I'm gonna try to make it to every single meeting. I'm gonna bring more people that are gonna represent my community, and I don't care if I have to pay people to come to these meetings. I feel like we need to be heard, we need to be seen, we need to be addressed, and we need to be attended to, and I can't do it by myself. So I need the help of you all to supply me with some resources or some information, point me in the directions of the people that I need to talk to, places I need to go, people I need to see, so that I can reach out to more people in my community, like I said, who are ignorant to the subject of certain things but actually have the necessary skills to acquire and accomplish goals that are unimaginable because we are so wrapped up in the hole. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Cooley, thank you. Your time has expired this evening.
Thank you.
You, sir, are exactly why we work so hard to create a community calling. If not to be a student, to be there and be a lifeboat for other students. You have skills to give to other people, and you should continue to do that.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for being here tonight. Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? Are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? And finally, are there any other citizens that wish to be heard? Seeing none, we will continue with our meeting. Next on our agenda are the approval of the minutes of the last two council meetings for both November 29th and November 30th.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Shauerman, seconded by Councilman Horton, to approve both the November 29th and November 30th minutes. Are there any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on the motion?
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Next on our agenda are reports of county officials. Mr. Sparber, does the county executive or her designees have any reports this evening?
Not this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We had a meeting of the finance committee, and our finance chairwoman, Kim Clear, is with us. Ms. Clear, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you very much. The finance committee met on Thursday, December 9th, 2021, for many hours, and we are, the finance committee is submitting to the agenda old business items A through C and new business items A through E, N through Q, V through Y. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Finance Chairwoman Clear. The Personnel Committee also met. Personnel Chairwoman Rennie, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The, excuse me, Personnel Committee met on Thursday, December 9th, 2021. I am submitting to tonight's agenda new business F through M and R through U, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Personnel Chairwoman Rennie. Next on our agenda, we do have a citation this evening for Eugene Sorrentino, offered this evening by councilpersons Shauerman and Schank. Mr. Smith, could you read the citation for us in outline tonight, please, and include it in the record of council in its entirety?
County of Erie citation for Mr. Eugene Gene Sorrentino, 1942 through 2021. Mr. Sorrentino was a U.S. Navy veteran and quite a character, I might add. Passed from this world on October 25th at the age of 79 years. Born March 14, 1942, to Joseph and Josephine Giuliano Sorrentino. Attended McDowell High School. He served his country in the U.S. Navy aboard the USS Regal, Air Force-58, USS Ranger, CV-61 naval ship. Achieved the rank of Petty Officer, Third Class, received the Good Conduct Medal before transferring to the Navy Reserves. He devoted himself to the Southern California Edison Corporation, retired 47 years later as a test day technician and a union representative for the Wine and Spirits Local. I enjoyed photography, fishing, shooting with his sons, very active in the Erie County Republican Party, lifelong member of the National Rifle Association. He'll be sorely missed by his loving wife of 57 years, Elizabeth Brown Sorrentino, and his two sons, Sean, married to Lynn, Brian, married to Lisa Ann, and his siblings Pamela, Donna, Cheryl, and James. We, the undersigned members of Erie County Council, join with councilpersons Shauerman and Schank in celebrating the life of Gene Sorrentino, a man dedicated to his country, community, and family. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And Councilwoman Shauerman, I will recognize you first for comments.
Yes, I was fortunate enough to meet Mr. Sorrentino Gene two years ago when I was running for office, and he's a person that leaves a lasting memory in your mind and in your heart. He's someone that I respect very much, and when they said, when Doug read what he was dedicated his life to, it should also say politics in there. He was very, very active politically and in the Republican Party and in his views and visions. And they called me out to their house and wanted to meet with me right away when they found out I was running. And I just will remember him always. He's always gonna stay in my heart and in my thoughts, and as well as his wife, Elizabeth. And I know she's moving to Texas with her son, but I hope to still stay in contact with her. He's just, as Doug said, a character that you just will never forget. He's a very, very special person. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shauerman. And Councilman Schank, would you like to offer a few words?
Yes, and I'm not gonna use any short jokes because he was very sensitive about his height, but that's okay. A man is not gauged by his height. It's the people he knows, loves, and talks to. I met Eugene at a rally, you know? It ends up my wife worked with him, so it was an instant connection. He was tough on me. He was tough on me being an Army guy. He was tough on me being an Army guy, because Navy guys love giving Army guys a hard time, and vice versa. He had two modes, he loved you, or he hated you. There was no middle ground with Mr. Sorrentino. And his lovely wife, and her beautiful British accent, was quite the pair, and when I ran for office, I didn't really know him, I met him casually, he invited me to his home, and that's a big deal. And basically, I walked into the lion's den. I had no clue what this "Hey, stop over by the house at 7:00" meant. Well, it was the entire West County Republican Party, and you had to put your best game on, and the questions were tough, they were sensitive, and Eugene had that look in his chair when we talked. I stopped by his house after he passed away, his wife and I were sitting in the living room, and we both looked at Eugene's chair as he was still there. So I have to personally thank him for getting me where I am today, because those days when you're on a campaign trail, and you're very discouraged, and things aren't going right, he was the guy that said, "Suck it up, buttercup, put your big boy pants on and drive on." So we lost a patriot, we've lost a family guy, a guy that loved his country, and he loved his community, and every time I look at the pin on my jacket, I will remember him, because he was the driving force that helped me get this little pin. That really doesn't mean much, doesn't say much, but it just says Erie County right here, and I proudly wear that, and I will always remember Eugene, and I stay in touch with his lovely wife via Facebook, and we'll have to figure out who's going to arm wrestle to deliver this citation to them, because I think just putting it in the mail is a little callous, so I yield back and thank you. Well, I'd rather arm wrestle. No, we'll take it together. Thank you, sir, I yield back.
Thank you, Councilman Schank. Next on our agenda are reports of members of council, and we have several members of council that wish to offer reports this evening. First member of council that wishes to offer a report is Councilwoman Shauerman. Councilwoman Shauerman, please go ahead.
This is also a report that comes from my heart, too. I have had the pleasure and the honor of serving with Kim and Scott and Carl the last two years, and I hope they also continue as a friend of mine. I have learned so much from Carl and Scott, and was along with Kim in our learning process, and it just has been an honor and a privilege to serve with you, and thank you for all your service that you've given Erie County, and I respect all of you, and I'm going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Horton, you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I prepared some comments, but wisdom probably speaks better things at this point. Sister Lydia opened me up, as if I needed opening up. My life's kind of an open book, some of you know, some of you don't. I buried three of my sons before they hit the age of 30, and so when people say happy holidays, it's not always happy, and you don't always get caught up in the meaning of the season. But I want to thank you, Lydia, because you reminded me that I still have a lot to be so, 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 so grateful for. And sometimes, after I get over the anger, I forget how blessed I am, I forget that I was living under a bridge, I forget that I ate garbage, basically. I forget. I try not to, that's why I come over to the Emey's Soup Kitchen, that's why I come over, I still eat there, because I never want to forget. That's why I come up to the Upper Room. I'm looking, because the Bible declares and decrees, whatever your hands find to do, do that, and I don't have to tell you, I love that community. I come into Park and Ranch when it's pouring down rain and looking for them, I'm searching. And I hope that you'll come back, and I hope that you'll come back, and I hope that you'll come back with other members of the community that we love so much. I remember when I was interim director over at the Upper Room, we'd go back and forth across the street to MHA Clinic, but there was a woman there named Miss Diana Ames. She was an advocate, because Diana, too, had been homeless, her and her husband, and she was an advocate at the state level, but here locally. She would bring quite a few of you all to these meetings sometimes. She would take them to city council meetings. That's the type of advocacy we're going to have to get back to, because it's not getting better. The programs that are in place don't always accept you, they're not always sensitive or compassionate to people who work at those places. In fact, some can be downright cruel. In fact, some can be downright cruel. I applaud you for your bravery, for coming, keeping your word, saying that you would come. I'm going to do everything in my power to see that you have a roof over your head. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Horton. Next, Councilwoman Rennie has a report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've gone through a wide range of testimony this evening, from the sublime to otherwise, and, you know, I think I can say that a lot of what I've seen tonight has reaffirmed my faith in humanity and the dedication that we each need to give to being that support to one another. My report this evening has to do with the structures of county government. County Council depends on certain things to be able to do our jobs well, and to be able to perform well collectively. We need reliable information, and we need open access to that honest information. We need effective meetings, we need to have public discussion. The conversations that we have should be in front of the public, for the most part, they shouldn't be decided by private conversation or phone calls, for the most part. We need to have integrity, we need to have respect for the process of county council, much the same that we do for any lawful gatherings, election process, et cetera. It's never perfect enough for me, I'm a librarian, I guess, so I've got that detail and rule-bound approach to things. So after the past two years, it's been, at times, difficult to take it in, and some of it has been a learning process for me. But last Thursday's finance and personnel meetings frankly brought it to a head for me. We had, in this, and what is on tonight's agenda, ordinances to pass for non-bargaining and appointed county employee salaries for 2022. This has a long history, it's within the Home Rule Charter, so it's 40-plus years, and more often than not, county council has taken those salaries and has matched whatever was being put forward for union-represented personnel. There have been occasional instances where the pay of either appointed officials and/or non-bargaining staff was frozen, but that was rare, I think once or twice that I'm aware of. In any case, this particular year has been markedly different. Yes, we're in the middle of a transition from one administration to another administration, and typical with changes in administration, we say goodbye to a lot of very fine people, and in some instances, we wish they didn't have to go. But I think we all understand that every new county executive has to be comfortable in selecting his team or her team. But there's still that regret. There, this time around, there are a number of changes, and I guess what I'm saying is that the county council process to set salaries and so forth was affected, I think negatively, in this go-round. The agenda, as it stood for personnel, was approved, and then it was changed, and when it landed before us, rather than having a standard 3% raise, they were blank, and the exhibits contained a range of increases from 3% to 10%. The county executive-elect was there to give remarks, however, was not able to stay for the duration of the whole thing, since the finance portion ran well in excess of three hours, I believe. The finance meeting itself, I believe, was a process in filibustering, and I have to be very blunt about that. This was within the personnel agenda, there was an unprecedented ask for salaries to be set in advance, for consideration to be given to increase the salaries for those appointed officials that would be brought in. And I would like to say that county council stands ready to work with anyone, however, we need to have our own processes. The setting of the agenda ought to be one of those. The allowing for discussion needs to be another one, and frankly, by the time that we reached the personnel agenda, I don't believe that we gave due time to what needed to be discussed, because it was physically impossible to do so. Two of the members of council left, and the rest of us were too exhausted to bring it forward. And I do believe that some of what happened fell under the category of tactics to try to bring it through, to try to make it happen. When the transition team was named for the new county executive, the one coming in, there was a liaison to council that was named. And by definition, a liaison should facilitate good communication and cooperation. There were never any discussions that I'm aware of how we would collectively meet that goal. However, at this particular meeting of county council last week, the liaison made the case for the county executive-elect's asks for pay compensation and the setting of that. What I would like to say is that the county executive, whoever that person may be, can make the case for what they need, as every county executive has coming before them. They bring in their recommendations for their appointments, they make the ask for salaries, and they make it by expressing their vision for what they can do with their team. They make it by talking about qualifications and knowledge and experience, and they come before council to ask for a particular salary. I think we all stand ready to be receptive, but it needs to be done in the proper way. The county executive does not need to draw upon council resources, does not need an agent among county council to carry initiatives or wants or needs forward, even though we all clearly have our opinions. But the council processes need to remain constant, and I guess that's what I have to say, more than anything, has been a concern for me. There has been a process recently of circumventing, of blocking discussion and so forth, and that, in the future, we need to make sure that that does not happen. And lastly, again, I would say, any county executive should not expect to draw on county council offices' personnel resources to fulfill the duties or fulfill their goals for their own department. They need to use their staff, they need to use their resources, or they need to do it themselves. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rennie. Are there any other members of council that wish to give reports? Councilman Schank?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say goodbye, but it's a new beginning for our councilpersons that are leaving. Now, we've talked about our councilpersons, there's also somebody else we need to talk about, Mr. Doug Smith, the guy that kind of keeps herding cats together during our sessions. For that, sir, I say goodbye and thank you, but I know where to find you. Just to let some people off the hook, Doug and I have this little kind of joke thing we do during roll call that you don't even catch. In our history, we had Mr. Faust and Carol Lowell. They had very, very specific ways they voted yes or no. Ms. Lowell always hesitated before she said, so Doug looks at me, yes. And then, to reflect back on Kyle, yes. Very quick, very decisive. So I'm going to miss that little banter we have, that nobody even knew we did until now, because the secrets can come out, because you're leaving us. Thank you, I appreciate all you've done for me personally, I appreciate you answering all my dumb questions via text message, I know where to find you, and I wish you the best in your travels upstairs. I yield back, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Schank. Are there any other members of council that wish to be heard? Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I promise to be brief. I want to thank every single person that I have worked with over the last two years. I cannot thank all of you enough for what you have given me, for what you have taught me, for the time that you took with me, and I have cherished every moment of the last two years, more than you'll ever know. Each one of you, I want to say thank you, from the bottom of my heart. I have been honored to serve with you. It truly has been two of the most amazing years of my life, and I am a better person for knowing you. That goes from our solicitor, to Ms. Swartz Fager, to Nicole, and Megan, and Jim, and Erica, Doug, Councilman Horton, Councilman Rastetter, Chairman Anderson, Councilwoman Rennie, Councilwoman Shauerman, and Councilman Schank. Thank you.
Councilman Rastetter?
Well, I'm pretty speechless about the whole thing. I want to thank everybody for sure, all of you, thank you. Yeah, I'd say this has been one of the best county councils ever. Yeah, I'd say this has been one of the best county councils ever. Everybody has contributed to it. The last couple of years have been dynamite. Mr. Smith is a dynamite clerk, and he's going to make a great director upstairs. And everybody that is involved, it's just amazing, just amazing. I know the public thinks they know about what county council does, but really, they don't. They have no clue. And it breaks my heart when people come in and complain. And it breaks my heart when people come in and they have troubles to talk about. The gentleman with the problem about information, gathering information, is probably one of the toughest things there is in this life. Nobody has the time of day to help out the next guy, except for Andre, of course. He's rough and ready, that's for sure. But I hope everybody involved has a great rest of their life. I thank them all very much.
Don't worry, Scott. We know where to find you.
Yeah. I don't know about that.
Do you think we're going to let you go anytime soon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
It's your turn.
Councilman Rastetter.
Well, I don't think I'm going to say anything.
No.
Not.
I find that hard to believe. But we do have to go, so.
You know, when I became interested in being involved in this community more than 35 years ago, my father said to me, if you're going to stand up, stand up for something, not against everything. And every time I've stood up, it's been for something. It's been for every person in this community. It's been for everything that is important to every single day of each of our lives. It's been for a community college that people thought only a miracle could make it happen. And with the likes of people who many thought this is an unusual kind of group to get together, an unusual kind of chemistry of people to come together, this unusual group came together and made something really unusual happen in this community. And it's going to pay dividends in this community for generations to come. People like Kathy Fatika, my dear and loving friend, people like Fiore Leone, Ron DiNicolò, and all the members of the Empower Erie Board, and so many people throughout the community that came together and fought this fight for a community college. But you know, there's one person in Erie County who has more courage than all of us, and that's Scott Rastetter, our colleague. In the face of immense pressure to vote against community college, Scott Rastetter stood up every single time because he believed what he was doing and what we were doing was going to change the trajectory of the lives of thousands of people for generations to come. Now, trust me, there's been a lot of games played around here. There's been a lot of submarining going on, a lot of misinformation, a lot of miscommunication. But we're not going to talk about the negative. We're going to talk about the things that unite us, the things that bring us together. As a group of people left, Andre Horton, Scott Rastetter, and I, and they were great friends of ours and sometimes great adversaries, these four new members of council came on board, and they became great allies and at times, great adversaries. And with the past council and this council, I would put these colleagues up against anybody in this country, a group of people that have come together, united for a cause, believing in the people of this community, believing in our hometowns, believing in each other for all the right reasons. We're one of the first counties in the country and in this state to come up with progressive and forward-thinking ideas of ways to invest the COVID money and the CARES money. And those are going to pay dividends for generations to come, creating a diversity, equity, and inclusion commission, the foundation for a fire authority, the foundation for I could go on and on, and I know all of you don't want me to. We can look at all the minutes to know exactly what we've all done here. But you know, as I say all of that, we should all be really vigilant. Democracy is really fragile. And there are forces out there that want to undermine our democracy. And by the way, everybody knows I'm a centrist, so I'm talking about the left and the right. There are people out there that want to undermine what our democracy is all about. And we have to stay vigilant to make sure that that doesn't happen. Because only by us working together in unity to accomplish the things that we have accomplished will we continue to forge forward and accomplish the things that we have been able to do to drive us through this pandemic and put us in a position to come out stronger and more united than we were before. I believe in this community. I believe in the strength of this community. I believe in the future of this community. And I will never stop believing in this community or the people that I serve with. The Brian Schenks, the Ellen Showermans, the Mary Rennies, the Andre Hortons, Scott Rastetters, the Kim Clears, all of our differences. When we're up here together, we come united to do the work of the people of this community. And we couldn't do it without our staff. Couldn't do it without Doug Smith and Nicole and Jill and Tom and Amy and our newest member. We couldn't do it without everybody who's here. We bring a new team member in, and they become part of the family. That's the way I see the vision of county council, not undermining and deceptive, but cohesive and united and growing for positive, better tomorrow. That's what I'm most proud of. Except for perhaps the way we conducted the 2020 election. Nobody can say that Erie County was not the fairest, most thorough, most transparent community in all of this country. So to all of you for allowing me participate in a brief moment of your life, I'm honored to have been able to do so. Thank you. Let's continue with the business of the council. First order of business is all business of council. Members of council have discussed the removal of a tabled item, and that is ordinance number 82. So I would entertain a motion to remove that item from the table.
So move. Second.
We have a motion to remove ordinance number 82 from the table by Councilwoman Showerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote to remove from the table?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, now that this item has been removed from the table, may we have a second reading of ordinance number 82 entitled?
Second reading of ordinance number 82, 2021, amending ordinance 45, 2018, to revise the Erie County Human Relations Commission ordinance.
So move.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I would like to amend the language of this ordinance. In section four, letter I, number four, we would like to strike the use of the words mental retardation and replace them with intellectual disabilities. This was an oversight on our first reading. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I will second that.
Thank you. We have a motion for amendment by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Rennie. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we now have a roll call vote on ordinance number 82 as amended?
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is another tabled item. It is resolution number 41. I just want to explain to the public what we're doing here. This is an item that has come before the council. County government is the third in the series of either the school district or the local municipality that ends up finalizing a in lieu of taxes agreement. When this agreement had come to us and we had asked our solicitor to take a look at it as well as work with the Tax Assessment Office, in this particular case, we did find some flaws, and it has been sent back to Tax Assessment. And we want to thank the liaison to Tax Assessment, Councilwoman Showerman, for her work. So the final agreement is not completed. And so what council is going to do is remove this from the table and vote it down and then start over when all of these taxing bodies are ready with a brand-new agreement. And that's our intention tonight. So I would look for a motion to remove from the table.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Showerman. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote to remove from the table?
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we have a reading of resolution 41 entitled only, please?
Resolution number 41, 2021, approval of payment in lieu of taxes agreement between the county of Erie, the city of Erie, the city of Erie School District, and the Lutheran Home for the Aged.
So moved.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Rastetter. And are there any further comments or questions or clarification from council? And remember, we want to vote this particular item down, so a no vote would be to clear this off of the books. Seeing no further comments or questions, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Schenk? Mrs. Clear?
No.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
No.
Chairman Anderson?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, may we have a, I'm sorry, the next item also is on the table, and it is our intention to remove that from the table as well. So I would entertain a motion to remove that from the table.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take this off the table.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Showerman, to remove from the table. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote to remove from the table, please?
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we now have a reading entitled only of resolution number 57, please?
Resolution number 57, 2021, approving changes to the Erie County Public Safety Advisory Committee bylaws.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Showerman. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Next on our agenda are items for new business.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I would like to amend the agenda. I would like to move items A through M to a second reading. I would also like to move items V to Y to be voted on as one. And I would also like to add resolution number 69 to the agenda. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a, we have a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear to amend the agenda, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote to amend the agenda?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Mr. Smith, may we now have a second reading of ordinance number 122 entitled only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 122, 2021, 12th 2021 Library Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $36,330 and New Line Items for CARES Funds.
So moved.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on ordinance number 122, please?
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. May we now have a second reading of ordinance number 123 entitled only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 123, 2021, 4th 2021 MHID Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $8,101,393 for additional emergency rental assistance funds.
So moved.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Shank. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. May we now have a second reading of ordinance number 124 entitled only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 124, 2021, 2021 Children and Youth Services Fund Budget Revised Expenditures of $46,000 and New Expense Lines for Court-Ordered Placements.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on ordinance number 124, please?
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Mr. Smith, may we now have a second reading of ordinance number 125 entitled only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 125, 2021, 2021 American Rescue Plan Fund Budget Revised Expenditures of $150,000 for Women, Minority, Small Business Center.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I would actually like to make an amendment to this ordinance due to information that we worked on with the Finance Department. And I guess, sorry, information we found out. Okay, the, it would read, "The 2021 American Rescue Plan Fund Budget Revised Expenditure of $250,000 for women," and then adding the word "as" minority, small business center. So changing the number to 250,000 and the, adding the word "as," which would then coincide with what we passed a few months ago. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to amend.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to be sure. I had thought at one point there was discussion this would be a 2022 American Rescue Plan Fund Budget, and I just wondered if that was the case.
Yeah, so it should be ordinance 121, 2021, but then 2022 American Rescue Plan Fund Budget?
That's what I understood you all had agreed on.
Yeah, so it would be just right, right here.
Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I'm going to look to Mr. Sparber and Ms. Knight about this. We have, if we, if we keep this, the 21, then the new council can take the rest of 22 later. So if we keep this 121?
From the agenda under item D, this item, and that's ordinance 125, is 21 for calendar year 2021. And item E is 126 for calendar year 2022.
Okay, so we have it right.
So it should, so this should remain 2021?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So the only two changes, then, Mr. Smith, would be the 250, 250,000 and the word "as."
Right. No further change.
No further change?
So we have the, the motion and the second. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. May we now have a roll call vote as amended, please?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. When you're ready. May we now have a second reading of ordinance number 126 entitled only?
A second reading of ordinance number 126, 2021, 2022 American Rescue Plan Fund Budget Revised Expenditures of $150,000 for Women, Minority, Small Business Center.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Shauerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairwoman Clear?
I would like to make an amendment to this ordinance as well. We would be changing the amount, as discussed with our Finance Department, to $425,000 and adding the word "as" between women and minority. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to amend.
Second.
The motion was made by Vice Chairwoman Clear to amend, seconded by Councilwoman Rennie. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Then, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote as amended?
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilwoman Rennie?
I would like to move that council now go into executive session.
I second the motion.
Call this meeting, county council back to order. Let's see, I think we were on number F, second reading.
127, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, 127, second reading entitled only of 127.
A second reading of ordinance number 127, 2021, 2022 Appointed Official Salary Ordinance, Director of Finance.
So moved.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of ordinance number 128 entitled only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 128, 2021, 2022 Appointed Official Salary Ordinance, Director of Administration.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Rennie, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any other comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. May we have a second reading of ordinance number 129 entitled only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 129, 2021, 2022 Appointed Official Salary Ordinance, Public Defender.
So moved.
We have a motion by Council, Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. May we have a second reading of ordinance number 130 entitled only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 130, 2021, Appointed Official Salary Ordinance, County Clerk.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Shauerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Shauerman?
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 Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shauerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of ordinance number 132 entitled only, please?
Perhaps 131, Mr. Chair?
Why not?
A second reading of ordinance number 131, 2021, 2022 Appointed Official Salary Ordinance, County Solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Shauerman. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Mr. Smith, may we have a second reading of ordinance number 132 entitled only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 132, 2021, approving the 2022 County Council Solicitor Retainer.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilwoman Rennie.
That's great. I, I would like to move, to move to amend the face sheet of the ordinance or the signature sheet to read $50,473 as discussed at council budget sessions.
Councilwoman Rennie, would you accept a friendly amendment to say at personnel, budget and personnel committee session?
I don't know if we talk to the general budget sessions, but, yes, I would.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Rennie, seconded by Councilman Horton. Are there any further comments or questions on the amendment? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Mrs. Rennie, now I beg your pardon, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. May we now have a roll call vote as amended on ordinance number 132?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Shank?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Mr. Smith, may we now have a second reading of ordinance number 133 entitled only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 133, 2021, approving the 2022 Appointed Official Salary Ordinance for Full and Part-Time Assistant Public Defender.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Showerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any comments or questions from members of council?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Vice Chairwoman Clear?
Um, I would like to make a motion to amend the exhibit to reflect and update the vacant position moving to step L in 2022. Uh, that's been suggested by Council CPA, Ms. Swartziger.
Second.
Thank you, we have a, uh...
What did I do wrong?
The second, the second motion, remember? I don't think it needed that. Oh, it didn't?
To move to step L for the vacant position.
I mean, I even have the notes that's to move to step L. Your eyes were confused.
Step K is the baseline for that position and is vacant. So I believe the exhibit shows step K, which is whatever it landed. But it's up to you what you want to do with that.
Um, Councilman Horton?
Yeah, that, if that position isn't filled, then I would, I would oppose your recommendation. I can't see, moving it up a grade and it's not filled, someone feels that we come back and then go through the same process that everybody else goes through.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Horton. Um, Amy, if we could have some, some clarity for the personnel chair?
So my, for the vacant position, which is position number 10, um, I thought the exhibit showed a K, which is the base level for that position.
Um, it's, okay, there it is. Okay. All right, well, my misunderstanding then, I thought that, you know, from reading the agenda combined with the entirety of the sheet, I thought it encompassed more than it does.
My agenda doesn't have those notes, so I don't know.
Okay, sorry about that.
No worries. I just...
Mr. Chairman, should I remove my motion to amend?
Well, before we do, if, if we don't amend, will it just stay in K where it should be?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, to, um...
Withdraw.
Withdraw my, um, sorry, to withdraw my amendment. I can't think anymore.
Thank you. Then, then we have a motion and a second. Uh, are there any further, um, questions or clarifications on this particular item? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on ordinance number 32 as presented? I'm, I'm sorry, 133.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have a second reading of ordinance number 134. Uh, Mr. Smith, if we could have that in title only, please?
A second reading of ordinance number 134, 2021, approval of 2022 Erie County Non-Bargaining Employees Pay Plan.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Rennie. Are there any comments or questions from members of council?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to say something here.
Uh, Councilman Schenk?
I'd like to make an amendment to this, to make this to a 14, to a 15, and also follow the guidelines that was presented to us under number seven and new number eight. Do you want me to read it all? We have it handed out.
Yep, for clarity, please.
To number seven, this provision does not apply to appointed officials, um, deleted to the Home Rule Charter. Bifocal, sorry. And then, new number eight, Erie County Home Rule Charter requires County Council to set the salaries of these appointed officials by ordinance, Director of Administration, Director of Finance, Director of Human Resources, County Solicitor, Public Defender, and County Clerk. The grades and pay charted in the County Pay Plan are strictly guidelines for minimum pay. These take into account the level of responsibilities for each appointed official, but not their relative experience and credentials. The final level of pay is determined by the County Council after weighing these factors in the job market.
Okay, and just for clarity, um, the level 14 to the 15 was the position discussed in caucus?
Yes, sir.
Election Supervisor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor for an amendment?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Schenk, seconded by Councilman Rastetter. Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Chairman, I would like to...
Oh, yeah, are there any further, further comments or questions?
Just one, you know, I know we've beaten this to death, and I understand people who want to remove, I, I understand the impetus to remove appointed officials from the pay plan. However, there is a real inaccuracy in this. Um, the grades and pay are not strictly guidelines for minimum pay. It covers a range of pay from persons' entrance to the time they leave the job, and it's, it's a wide range. Look, that in particular is, is not accurate, and the range does take into account the level of responsibility. So I, I really object to those two sentences, the grades and pay charted in the County Pay Plan, and then they take into account the level of responsibility. Um, I would remove those two sentences, at the very least, which aren't accurate. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Um, we do, do have a motion and a second. Um, is there any acceptance for any of that as a friendly amendment?
I stand on how I read it.
I would, I would second taking that, those two lines out. Oh, no. No, thanks.
He didn't, he didn't ask.
Oh, 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 I see.
So... Uh, Mr. Chairman, if those, if those last lines were eliminated, it doesn't affect anything. Concerning the head of council, it is a challenge to that because you're getting into what the pay, what the pay plan really is, an attempt to assess the qualifications of, of the applicant who came in. And it's cleaner, uh, in number seven and number eight, where your, your council will simply make the point that these, these particular appointed officials, appointed officials are not part of the pay plan area. Uh, Mr. Schenk, does that change your position with, uh...
Of course, I always support the input of our solicitors, so yes, I, I'm okay with that.
You, okay, you would accept that then?
Yes, as a friendly amendment.
Um, Mr. Rastetter? Are you in agreement with that then as...
Yeah, I'll go along with Tom. Before I am on that friendly amendment.
Okay. Um, so we have a, a motion on the floor, um, for the, uh, election supervisor from an N B fourteen to fifteen, and, um, number seven, as it reads, number eight, striking out the last two sentences, I guess, would be the last three, Mary? Starting with the grades or starting your day table?
Starting with the grades and... Uh, really, it's redundant. I mean, it says in the beginning, County Council...
Right, so at, after, after clerk, you guys are okay with it?
How dare you put that in front of me?
That's fine.
Okay. So then, uh, any, striking out anything after clerk on there? Everyone understands that with the friendly amendment? Are there any further, any further comments or questions on that? Um, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote on the amendment? Or on the amendment?
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
No.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Smith, may we have a, um, roll call vote on the ordinance number 134 as amended?
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
No.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda is Resolution Number 61. Uh, Mr. Smith, if we could have that reading and title only, please?
Resolution Number 61, 2021, approving an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Crawford County, Warren County, and Erie County for a regional collaborative EMS response plan.
So moved.
Second.
Um, we have a motion by Councilwoman Showerman, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council?
Just one quick, Chairman.
Uh, Councilman Schenk?
Thank you. And of course, being a member of the EMS emergency, uh, family, I proudly support this. I, I get the intent of what they're doing, and anything that can make our community safer, I'm proud to put my vote on. I yield back.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Schenk. Any other members of council? I, uh, just want to make a couple brief comments, and, um, that is to thank Jessica Haran Cunzo, uh, and John Grappi, and, uh, all the other people that, uh, have been involved in, uh, working on this particular project for this, uh, intergovernmental cooperation agreement, uh, particularly with the, uh, the extra time that they took with, with council, uh, with our office, with our solicitor, with, uh, individually with council members, uh, collectively together, uh, the work that they have done with, uh, County Executive Administration, uh, as we talked about in caucus, uh, this is really, I believe, uh, as well as they do, um, that through this crisis in, uh, emergency, uh, services throughout our community, um, that this is going to be, uh, a way to go in the future, and, uh, it's going to give us a pathway and a launching board, uh, for, uh, what I believe will be a, uh, an authority-type creation of not only a fire, but a, a, a complete EMS, um, authority instituted through statute from the state. So, uh, I applaud everybody involved, uh, and my council colleagues that will continue to serve on council, uh, as this evolves and you continue to work on it. With that said, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote?
On Resolution 61, Mr. Schenk?
Hmm, and the rest, yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we have a reading of Resolution Number 62, in title only, please?
Resolution Number 62, 2021, approval of the 2022 operating capital budget of the Erie County Convention Center Authority and associated properties.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Showerman. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Resolution 62, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we have a reading of Resolution Number 63, and title only, please?
Resolution 63, 2021, approving the financial statements and independent auditor's report of the Erie Area Council of Governments for the calendar year ending December 31, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Showerman. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Resolution 63, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, when you're ready, if we could have a reading of Resolution Number 64, and title only, please?
Resolution Number 64, 2021, approving the annual budget of the Erie Area Council of Governments for calendar year ending December 31, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Showerman. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we have a reading and title only of Resolution Number 65?
Resolution Number 65, 2021, approving the 2022 Solicitor Contract for the Office of the Erie County Controller.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilwoman Rennie. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Resolution 65, Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
We're really cooking along now.
Ooh, wow.
Mr. Smith, may we have a reading of Resolution Number 66, and title only, please?
Resolution Number 66, 2021, approving the 2022 Solicitor Contract for the Office of the Erie County Clerk of Records.
So moved. Second, oh, go ahead, ma'am.
We have a motion by, uh, Councilwoman Showerman, seconded by Councilwoman Rennie. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, may we have a, uh, reading and title only of Resolution Number 68, please?
I believe we want Mr., uh, number 67 first.
Oh, just, hey, we were moving so good, I just thought we'd keep us snapping along.
Resolution Number...
67, please.
67, 2021, approving the 2022 Solicitor Contract for the Office of the Erie County Sheriff.
So moved.
Second.
Um, we have the motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter. Are there any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On Resolution 67, Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
Uh, then, Mr. Smith, uh, next, we, uh, had, uh, combined the, uh, into one motion, the...
68?
Uh, what, what I wanted to say, Mr. Smith, was, could we have a reading and title only of Resolution Number 68, please?
Resolution Number 68, 2021, reaffirming the appointment of First Assistant District Attorney Elizabeth Hirs as Erie County District Attorney.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter. Any further comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On resolution number 68, Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Now, next, Mr. Smith, we have amended the agenda to include items V through Y in one vote. Could you just give the address, if that is sufficient, to council members?
Do I have to say so moved?
Oh.
Parcel at West 19th Street? Parcel for sale at GE Parkway Lot 1. Parcel for sale at, commonly known as Buffalo Road. Parcel for sale at 342 East 24th Street.
So, sorry, second.
The motion was made by Councilman Horton, seconded by Vice Chairwoman Clear. Are there any comments or questions on any of the parcels? Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. We have also added to the agenda resolution number 69, if you could read that in title only, please?
Resolution number 69, 2021, authorizing the Erie County of Erie to enter into the settlement agreements with McKissin Corporation, Cardinal Health, Inc., AmerisourceBergen Corporation, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Jansen Pharmaceuticals, Ortho McNeil Jansen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., and Jansen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., and agree to the terms of the Pennsylvania Opioid Misuse and Addiction Abatement Trust.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Vice Chairwoman Clear, seconded by Councilman Rastetter. Are there any comments or questions from members of council?
I do quickly want to congratulate County Executive Doll Camper, her solicitor staff, and former councils who stepped forward and gave the authority to the administration to pursue this opioid settlement, which has become a killing machine and a detriment, to say the least, on our community. And although we congratulate them on the settlement we will receive, it pales in comparison to the damage that's been done to our community and will continue to be done and the lives destroyed and the lives lost in our community. Nonetheless, Attorney General Josh Shapiro and so many who have been out there protecting Pennsylvanians and those of us throughout Erie County, protecting the lives of Erie County, deserve to be commended for the work that they've done, and we certainly appreciate the work of our own solicitor in looking over this agreement. So with that said, Mr. Smith, may we have a roll call vote, please?
On resolution number 69, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Shauerman?
Yes.
Mr. Schenk?
Yes.
Mrs. Clear?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. Before we adjourn, I just want to say to my colleague and Councilman Horton in particular, after I thought very eloquently about unity and the things that bring us together, I abandoned that with my temper when we left the council chamber. And I owe him an apology, and in particular, and my colleague for that conduct.
Accepted.
And certainly want to offer that. And thank you. With that said, this council has been a joy in my life and certainly a reward to participate in. The next council meeting will be a reorganizational meeting of Erie County Council to be held on January 3rd in Room 114 in the Erie County Courthouse, in which the new council members will be sworn in, and we certainly wish them all the best in their new endeavor. And the new schedule for the council, the finance committee personnel, and all the regular meetings will be duly advertised at the beginning of the year. If any members of the public wish to speak at upcoming meetings, they can reach out, as always, to the council office. And remember, the swearing-in ceremony is in the morning, and the reorganizational meeting always occurs immediately after. If we do not come together to do the business of Erie County before the holidays, I wish everybody a happy and merry holidays and a safe New Year. I call this, well, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. And I call this meeting adjourned.